Well, welcome. Ashley, we all fixed up over here?
I think so.
You got what you need to do? Okay. Well, it's a little bit three minutes after six, but we'll get the meeting started. And I'll ask Karen to give an indication. And if we're in a question that would like to be, please rise.
Goodbye, head. Dear heavenly Father, we're here to thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. We're asking for your guidance as we begin our meeting. And Lord, I'm asking that you keep your arms of protection around our county, the citizens in our county, and the leadership of this county, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now have reading and approval of the previous minutes. I need a motion, please. We have two sets. We'll take the oldest set first, which will be April 8th. I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the April 8 minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any adjustments, corrections?
Uh, in future, we could add the staff attorney and the members of the public to the minutes that we have. There was something in that.
Okay. All right. We have comments and a minor correction to the minutes, both April 8th. We'll call for a vote. All in favor?
I'd like to interject. This is doing anything.
Nope, that's not bad.
Well, with respect to the motion, we had a motion. Is the motion to approve with an addition, with the addition of the county attorney being present?
Yes.
Okay.
And the public.
And it's confirmed with Mr. Mayfield?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the second. And the public?
Well, usually, we're used to it. I don't get it because that's just very nice. So I put this whole back up.
Okay. So I just want to make sure the motion is clear to approve with that one change to add the county attorney and then the second as well.
Good catch. All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that takes care of the April 8th minutes. We now entertain a motion to accept the May 13th minutes.
I make a motion to approve the May 13th minutes with the addition to adding the county attorney to the attendance.
We have a motion to amend with adding our good county attorney to the list of county staff and attendants. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes. Under number three minutes, it says that he, that Harold, we do adopt the minutes, we actually go to table those minutes.
Yeah, which is wild.
There's also the type of wound you need.
Yeah. It's pet homes.
That's okay. I don't mind. The pet home, the taco is fine.
It says pay homes.
I'm sorry, everybody not paying me, so.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We've got a lot of ground to cover tonight, and so we're going to try to use these microphones so that everybody can hear. We have a microphone at the podium there. And what I'd like for everyone that comes up to speak to state your name and your address so that we've got that for the record, okay? Name and address. Also, to the best of our ability, we want to try to adhere to a 10-minute discussion per side. So each person, the proponent, and then those who may want to comment in support or against, we'd like to collectively have that held within 10 minutes if possible, okay? So with that, we'll start with old business. And we have CU 190683 Global Year Inc. Ashley or Charles, who's going to have the honors?
Ashley. Yes. Okay. So I'm going to start with the memo that I previously was reading after every single rezon. I'm going to just do it once at the beginning so I don't have to read it every time. I am going to hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony, in order that this information be made part of the record and shall be available for the Board of Commissioners to review. So CU 190683 for Global Year Inc., that is located at 11178 Henderson Mountain Road in Jasper. It is for a conditional use permit to operate a missionary training center. It's on a 14.67 acre parcel, also known as parcel 058028002. You can see on the map behind you, you've got a location map that shows it without the zoning, and then you've got one that shows that the surrounding zoning is ag as well as rural residential. And then there's the street view of Mr. Contry's property. This one, the character area, is rural residential, and I have included a map that shows where that is located at in Pickens County in relation to that character area. And it's the little black star on the far left corner. For the recommendation on this one, and it looks like it came over a little wonky, it is, "After reviewing the applicant's request to obtain a conditional use permit on the property for the 14.67 acres, staff recommends approval of this request with the following conditions: The applicant shall not construct more than two cabins on the property for the proposed use, and the applicant shall adhere to all buffer and erosion requirements as set forth by the local and stables."
Okay. Thank you, Ashley. Miranda, do we have a summary of everybody that wants to speak?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, we'll start out first, Mr. Contry. See, you're present. Come on up. How are you tonight?
I'm lovely. How you doing?
Good, good. Good, good.
Are you going to operate the?
I've got it over here.
I was asked just to share a little bit about who, of what we're actually doing. My name is Johnny. I'm the president, founder of Global Year. I was a student pastor for 30 years, and as serving a student pastor, one of the crises of our culture is to see nine out of every 10 kids that grow up in church or graduate high school and leave the church. And so really burdened about so many kids really transitioning from being in a youth group, serving in the church, and then not doing well. And so we started this ministry, really, it's a gap year ministry, to help make disciples who are making disciples, to help kids transition well into adult life. And so the next slide, that's just the culture, kind of about who we are. Obviously, we're a ministry that's about making disciples, Christ followers. I was asked just to give a little bit snippet of that. The next slide talks about specifically what we do. We send students on a gap year. So the property that we're going to be using is not where the students are going to be doing their gap year. It's simply where we train the students for a couple weeks before we send them off internationally. And so what we do, we talk about sending them on a gap year to acquire another language we believe is important in the culture we're living in, for us to speak a different language other than English so that we can communicate with so many that are coming to us as well. And the best way to do that is to put them on the field to learn another language and to get college credit, of course. But the second thing is the cross-cultural experience. Moving students out of our culture for a season into a different culture kind of gives them a better worldview, perspective. And then ultimately, we're about training students to become fully devoted followers of Jesus, making disciples, who are making disciples. And so we're a gospel-centered ministry. The next slide, we're sending students, this is talked about all over the world, basically in 15 different countries. Again, the property is a ascending place, point. We want to send kids out of Pickens County, not keep them here. We do want them to come back after their gap year, go to college, go to work, I believe being greater men and women of God, serving their community. But as far as the gap year and the ministry that we do, we have our missionaries around the world, Europe, Asia, Africa, Central South America. So that's where we send them, where they'll spend eight months out of that gap year experience abroad, and then we come back, they'll come back for a week or two to do a debrief, and so basically process that experience. Next slide. So this is the property. Basically, the respite cabin is a place for pastors, for missionaries to come and have a place to respite. We've got missionaries that are abroad that come home for a short season, and we want them to have a place, as well as where our students would be during that week or two of training before we send them out, and then when we bring them back. So that's just a picture of the property there on Henderson Mountain Road, and then a picture of what the cabin is going to look like on the property. There should have been a plat, but I think they saw that on the front end initially. But intentional use, basically, Global Year is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit ministry that equips and trains young people, 18 to 25 years of aides, to make disciples around the world. The use of the property is to build a barn dominium, office, training center, where that we, our home staff, there's about a half a dozen of us that would be there, we train our students, we mobilize students, that kind of thing, as we go out visiting churches and so forth, schools. Also, we want to build that cabin to be used for the students during that training time and for the missionaries and staff as they come back for a short stint, or time of re- respite, as we call it. So that's the purpose of which we want to use the property. Is there another slide? That's just basically our staff here and abroad. And then the next slide, they're just testimonies of our students and where we go. And then the next slide, basically, is I stuck there because it shows our website or where you can go and learn more about who we are and what we do. So it's globalyear.org. So that's just a short snippet of who we are and what our plans are to, for the property.
Is Global Year a part of a bigger organization, or is that just your thing?
It's us.
Okay. What you see is what you get.
That's it.
And so how many, how many folks would be there at any one time?
Well, this year, we're going to send out 10 students along, at one time, there'll be those 10 students, and then our staff that would be training, training them.
So they live in dormitories there while they're going through training?
That's right.
Okay. And that's, they're in one of the two cabins?
That's correct.
That you've got identified there?
Yes, sir.
And where do the recruits come from?
School, churches, youth groups.
Local?
Mostly local. Some will come from, you know, not from here, students that find us on the website. But we do a serious job of aid, simply because we're not going to send a kid for eight months abroad that's not been well-vetted and passed our vetting process. We really are trying to find the people that are serious about spending a gap year serving the Lord abroad.
And where does your funding come from?
Churches and individuals.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, how long do you anticipate it should be in there?
It'll be two weeks at a time, generally. You know, the, in other words, in the fall, just before we send them out, so September, October, around that time, there's a couple weeks of training, that they'll be there. And then in the spring, we just had some debrief, so end of May versus June, there'll be home, usually three to four days of debrief.
What age?
18 to 25.
And how many of these sessions you're going to have per year?
Well, there's the, what we call launch, which is the training before we send them out, and then there's the debrief, which is the transitional training before they, you know, to help them transition back. So there's two, one in the fall, one in the spring.
And you just do one group a year?
That's correct.
I drove through that property last week, and when you get in there, there's a manufactured home, and then you go to the left, there's a house, and you go around the little pond, and there's a house on the other side. Where in there are you planning on building this, these two buildings?
So where the trailer is, is where the office and training center will be.
That's the barn dominium?
Yeah, barn dominium, that's right. So that trailer won't be there. And then as you're coming in, on the right, is where we're going to put the little respite cabin, on the hill.
Other questions from the board?
Conditions of the staff don't present any issue for you?
The conditions?
To replace on the property?
None.
Okay. That's all.
Further questions? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Without the speakers, Mr. Chair.
I don't have anyone that wanted to speak, although I was listed here. Was there anyone that wanted to speak on this issue that didn't sign up? Because I don't have a form. Okay? No. All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the application for the motion.
We have a motion. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll close CU 190683 and open up a hearing on RZ 190685 Holly Family Trust. This was tabled from last month. Jerry Corey, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Come forward, please.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, do the staff report.
I mean, the staff report.
You're going to do what?
The staff report.
Okay.
Okay. So RZ 190685.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm getting confused with all this.
It's the microphones. I know. It throws everybody for a loop. So 190685 is Holly's Family Trust. This is 5545 Cove Road, Jasper. Its request is to take a two-acre portion of the 21.72 acres from ag to rural residential. That parcel number is 045023001. The intent of the zoning request is to sell the property to an individual for the development of a single-family dwelling. Behind you is a map that shows in the location of the property, and that is from the street view at the very base of Cove Road that looks up Corey Camp Road. The surrounding zoning is rural residential and ag. This is the proposed survey that shows the two acres that is to be split if approved. And then this is the character area, which is rural residential, and you can see the star on the map, which indicates that it's well within that rural residential character area. The recommendation, "After reviewing the applicant's request of the rezon for the two acres from ag to rural residential," is that the staff recommends approval of this request with the following condition, which is that the developer must communicate with staff regarding erosion control to ensure all BNP measures and guidelines are followed and adhered to.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Corey?
My name is Jerry Corey. I live at 225 Corey Camp Road. I've shared this with you. I'm sorry I didn't cut who's, what this is about. This is about the Holly family, property, Holly Family Trust. At the top of the first photo, that white circle, that is the two acres, the yellow road that wraps around that, the white circle, is Corey Camp Road. That yellow road leads to that orange roof, which is the cabin of the Holly Family Trust. And all of that property that that yellow road is on is the Holly Family Trust, 20-some acres, Holly Family. Down about, on the left-hand bottom part of the page, the yellow circle, that's the family of the Daniels that are also in the room. That's about a quarter of a mile distance as the bird flies. It's actually a little bit over a quarter-mile distance. The light blue is the outline of the Daniels property, and then you see the two creeks. At the top right-hand corner, where the white arrow is, that is the spring that comes out of the Daniels property that flows down through that creek that makes the creek on the Holly Family property, that eventually goes on to two other properties before returning back onto the Daniels property. Returning to the second photo, this is a high-level Google view of the property. The blue dot on the right-hand, top right-hand side of the page is the two acres. You can see the orange roof and the Holly Family cabin. Down at the bottom right, you'll see the dark circle. That is the spring coming out of the Daniels property, flowing through the Holly Family property. And the reason for this photo is, last, on our last month's meeting, we talked about three trees that we would have to take out where that blue dot is. Two of those trees are in the Amacalilva power line easement on Corey Camp, and the other tree is where we want to put the slab for the home. But as you can see, as you look at this photo, this aerial shot, there's hundreds and hundreds of trees surrounding that creek, not to mention all the undisturbed vegetation that is along that creek. Now, once you leave the Holly Family property and go up to the top of the page where the red circle is, that's the Daniels property again, you'll see that there's less and less trees and less and less vegetation protecting the creek. The next photo is a picture of the creek on the Holly Family property. That's below the two acres, and that's where the chairman and I went down to, we went down through the woods, and this is the creek. This is the location we were standing in, and you can see the condition of the creek as it leaves, as it's leaving the Holly Family property to go on to the other two neighbors' properties. The next photo is where the creek actually goes on to the Daniels property. You can see the Daniels homes, the white home on the right-hand side of the page. There are neighbors' homes on the left-hand side of the page. That water area where the fire marshal's going through, that is the creek that comes from there, spring through the Holly Family, through two neighbors. A little side story on that, for many, many years, they used to have to drive through that creek to get to that neighbor's home. And just recently, I think the middle of last year or maybe earlier, they put that culprit into the left-hand side where the driveway is today. The last photo I want to share is another high-level view of the property. Again, the white circle is the two acres. The yellow road is Corey Camp. The cabin is, the orange roof is the cabin. All of those red dots are residential, rural residential properties that surround the two acres. The properties from our neighbors that actually touch those two acres that we want to rezon, haven't said a word about any issues, any concerns with us rezoning that to equal the zoning of their properties as well. Now, with that said, we wanted to talk about the erosion control plan a little bit. So in closing, pre-meeting, before last month's meeting, we had, we did a couple things. One is we had a level three soil analysis done on the property. That soil analysis was brought to the Environmental Health Department, and this is a paper from the Environmental Health Department that also, they reviewed the soil, and they came out to the property, reviewed the property. And this right here is a permit for us to be able to, approval for us to be able to build a residential home, and for the separate tank to be installed. The other thing that I have, and I'd like to share a couple copies with you, but I need them back if you don't mind. This is the erosion control plan. You'll see on this plan that we meet the requirements of Pickens County, although we haven't talked to them yet to make sure, but this is what the plan looks like. You can see on that plan the information. It also has documentation of what we want to do up in the top left-hand corner. And you'll see in the middle of that page, you'll see a dark gray area. That dark gray area is from the approver that is certified from the Georgia Soil and Soil Commission to approve those types of programs. Mr. Corey, did you say you need all of these back? I could leave one.
And we can just get a copy for the record.
Oh, yeah, he can have that. Do you need a copy of this as well?
And yeah, and you can email that to me tomorrow.
Okay. So you can see that's been approved. The person that actually approved it, that's a certified approver from the Georgia Soil and Water Commission, also was out of the site. That's all that happened, unless you have some questions.
So when you and I met, we talked about the erosion control.
Yes, sir.
You indicated, we were talking about the cell fence.
Yes, sir.
And you also indicated hay bales.
Yes, sir.
I don't see the hay bales listed. Did you still intend to do that?
Well, if you read on the top left-hand corner, it talks about seeding and, you know, if there's any prolonged exposure of the, of the ground and covering it with hay and straw. So that is on there. But that's, that is the way that it was approved by the Georgia Soil and Water Commission. So we wanted to stick with that plan, of course, until we meet with Pickens County to see exactly what they want us to do also.
So, I mean, one way of thinking about it would be that this would be a minimal requirement?
Yes, sir. That's, yes. And again, it's, you know, we went by with the Georgia, Georgia Ways and Soil, what we're supposed to do. But if you look in that corner, it talks about if there's prolonged exposure to, you know, dirt that we'll cover with hay and straw, et cetera.
All right. Further questions from the board? For Mr. Corey? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We welcome back Phil McHagel. Your assistant. Dana, Dana, are you going to speak, or are you just handing things out?
Perhaps she will not. We'll, we'll see how fast I can get with this. You've got, I am Phil McHagel, and I'm the trustee of the Daniel Family Trust.
Can you tell everybody where you live?
I am on 5712 Cove Road.
Which is right across the street.
Across the road from 5613 Cove Road, and that's the property that I'm, that I'm trying to protect. So what you have in front of you is information on the Corey Camp Road subdivision. And I say subdivision because, in fact, that is what's going on. So if you turn to the next page, you'll notice that this is what the property looked like in 2018. You were told last week, last month, that there were very few trees taken down off of that property. Now, if you'll compare that with the following page, you'll see from 2018 to 2024, in fact, there was quite a bit of trees taken down upstream from 5613 and 5595. The next couple of pages show how much timber was actually taken off of that property between 2018 and 2024. So I guess one of the questions that I would have is, I know that the county has discretion with regard to subdivisions and family inheritances. So is it three houses, four houses, or eight houses before the county decides that they have to comply, that that development actually has to comply as though it were a developer's subdivision? That's one of my questions. And I would ask also, with regard to the erosion control, and I'm glad that Mr. Corey brought that up, would that, would this include your street design standards? Would it include your utility easements? Would it include flood hazard potential because the properties that are in question, there are actually three properties, 5595 Cove Road, 5613 Cove Road, and 280 Old Carbon Road down in Marble Hill. Those pieces of property are in question because they are high-risk flood hazards. And also, have we talked about the erosion control measures that might apply if this were considered an actual subdivision? Because keep in mind, on that road, as Mr. Corey mentioned, there are actually four homes already on that road. On Corey Camp Road, as you turn off of Cove Road, there are actually four homes already on that road. So we're now asking to add, to put in a bit of home there. And as he pointed out to you, the number of trees, I realize that he said only a few trees were taken. You've had a chance to look through that and compare 2018 to 2034. So my question is, on this next two acres, what exactly qualifies as a few trees that will need to be taken down? Okay. If you turn on- If you turn on through there, you'll come across a picture of culvert and erosion control that is currently connected to the Corey property. That's the erosion control that you've got going on right now. And that actually spills over onto the Abbott's driveway as it splits off, and then that spills into the creek. And he accurately described for you how that creek meanders through all those properties, but eventually, it winds up on the 5613 Cove Road property, which actually has three creeks that culminate into one culvert that goes under Cove Road. Okay, so if you keep turning, he accurately described for you where the property is that's in question. I'm sorry, bouncing on you here. He described for you accurately where the property is, the two acres, and so we also have that outlined for you so that you can see that, where the property will be put in. Okay, all of that meanders down. I understand that the soil erosion problem is not a problem for people upstream. It's a problem for those of us downstream. So, if you'll look at the picture of 5613 and notice the culvert, the culvert was installed in 1968 probably by Pickens County in order for my parents to have a driveway. You'll notice the turbidity of the water. This is after about a one hour or so of rain nowadays. You'll notice the turbidity of the water, and you'll notice also, my sister's handiwork, as well as she's paying other people to come in and help her with this stacking and packing rocks around that culvert so that it doesn't wash out. So, it's not a matter of if it's going to wash out, it's a matter of when it's going to wash out. If you'll turn on over to the next page, you'll notice this is the flooding that we're talking about. This is the flooding. Okay, keep turning there. That stream A and B that meet on that side of the culvert, that doesn't include also, we have another stream that comes in and meets on the other side of the property. They all culminate into one culvert that goes under Cove Road. Now, keep in mind, all of that water's going to make its way all the way down to also 280 Old Harbin Road. They've got a problem as well. Okay?
Excuse me, tell me, when was that picture taken, the one that shows the...
That picture, Dana, you'll have to refresh my memory. This particular picture of the flooding was 2018. That was 2018, but this is, this is common now. This is common, okay? This is common, we just, you know, these are the pictures that we have documented. And the reason we have so many pictures documented is because we've already had one EPA lawsuit settled in our favor. That's the reason we have all these pictures documented. So, my other question is this, okay, this may be a done deal. Maybe it's okay to go ahead and convert from agricultural to rural residential, because they're upstream, they're not going to feel the pain. You told me, you said, "Miss Hagel, the damage is already done." And I will argue with you, yes, the trees have already been taken down, no putting them back, but the damage is dynamic for us. It continues with every rainfall. The damage is dynamic. It is not done for us. It continues, and it's not just one piece of property, it's several pieces of property that have had the same thing happen. So, we're just asking for a little bit of grace from Pickens County, and we're also concerned about this. Those culverts that I mentioned, they're on the right-of-way, they belong to Pickens County. So, are we setting aside for the taxpayers money in a contingency fund that will allow for you to replace said culverts, not if they wash out, when they wash out? When they wash out? And you've got three culverts involved, and I'm talking about 5613. Yes, there was a culvert installed at 5595. That was after the Daniel family asked to have the county road abandoned, okay? We had no problem driving through the creek until so much damage was done upstream, it washed out the creek. So, the Ridings family decided they wanted a culvert put in, and they did that at their own expense, okay? So, that's why there was a culvert put in there. But again, all of this that you're seeing so far is a result of private people having to pay for that. You'll keep turning on through there, you'll notice, I've referred to one other piece of property, 280 Old Harbin Road. You'll see also, it falls under a high-risk flood zone, and it is way down below us in Marble Hill. They've got a culvert, and you'll notice the very last page, they're having to do the same thing we're having to do. They're having to pack stuff in right and left to keep that culvert from washing in on them. And I would wager to say, they have a worse problem than what we did. So, all I'm asking is, is for a little grace for three pieces of property, but my parents' property in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Hold on, Dana, let me see if there's any questions from the board for you. Any questions from the board? Phil was very thorough.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Curry?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything to add to what Ms. Hagel has laid out here?
I do. The Holly Family property, as you saw, is covered in trees. There is nothing near that creek. It's hundreds and hundreds of trees. It's surrounded by vegetation that's been there for many, many years. And I hate that their home is built in a flood plain, but the white house in the middle of that blue is flood plain, and that's the Daniels home. They, I know they're living with that, but that's not, the two acres that we're trying to rezone for my brother so he can live next door to his son, has nothing to do with them being in a flood zone. I hate that they're in it, and, but they are. They built the home in the flood zone.
No, we didn't.
The county created that forest.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, the, where the county created that. I really don't know what this is the flood map.
All right. Hold on a second. Any further questions for Mr. Curry? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Charles, there's several issues been raised about erosion control and whether or not we've got a subdivision in the making here, and that imposes different requirements. Can you comment?
For one, we have not received any information that suggests that there's going to be a subdivision. That's something that we cannot control at this time because we don't have that information. Secondly, I want to reiterate that Pickens County is a LIA, which is a local issuing authority, and that means that we're under the auspices and direction of the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, EPD, and what have you. So, I can't speak for the past, but I know right now and moving forward, the county is going to be very liable, liable and accountable in terms of how we enforce our erosion control ordinances moving forward.
So, with respect to the concerns they've got about the two acres being further developed than what they are today, because today, there's scrub rush. Are you satisfied with this set of documents with respect to the erosion control plans?
Satisfied is not, I really don't use that word, but...
What word?
They have fulfilled the requirements that we need in our office. In terms of any further or future subdivisions that will be built, that will also have to go through a process. And I want to reiterate as well, no matter if they rezon this property or not, a house can be built. But no matter what happens, everything has to go through our ordinances and our codes.
All right.
The kind of inspection frequency that we're having on the erosion plan?
Well, as a LIA, we are required to really put some stipulations with the developers. For example, if there's a rainstorm event, they're supposed to have updated information at the whim. We can end up, we can go out there at the property without even letting them know. Somebody has to be there to provide, okay, these are the BMPs, our best management practices that we've done to address or mitigate any events that were caused by the rainstorm event. So, there's quite a bit of reporting, quite a bit of checking, quite a bit of staying in contact with them, because if we don't catch them, the state will. And we would rather Pickens County, if you don't want us catching them, not the state, because guess what? We'll get penalized just as much as the developers, as a county. If not more. Thank you, Ashley.
So, Charles, has anything changed your mind with respect to what you've heard today relative to the recommendation that you've made?
Nothing's changed my mind, but I had a great conversation with the Hagel family, and we definitely understand their concerns. And one thing, you know, we want to stress as a staff, it's great to have communication with our citizens. We know already that we're going to have to have a watchful eye on this property, but because of the conversations that we've had with the Hagels, it's going to put extra eyes on this situation. And I did make a promise to them last week that we'll keep them informed with everything that we're doing as a county to ensure that everything is being followed by our codes and what's needed as a LIA jurisdiction.
Thank you. Pat, last meeting, when we tabled this discussion, you made a comment about the applicant planting more trees.
Yes, and you're still going to plant more trees than you could.
Yes, ma'am, and it's included, it's included on that plan, that part of the left-hand corner of one of the 11 steps that we plan on doing.
How many trees is that, Mr. Curry?
You know, with the entire landscaping, the grass, the bushes, et cetera, we're probably at least planting six to eight. But depending on how it all lays out, we know we're planting at least three or four down the driveway area and in front of the home along Cove Road. I'm sorry, Corey.
Further questions from the board? Okay, do I have a motion?
Excuse me. Can I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
There's two minutes remaining.
I'm Phil McHagel's sister, and I live at the property in question, my parents' property. And, you know, just to make sure we're all on the same page, when my mom and dad bought this property, it was not in a flood zone. They gave up about four acres to make Cove Road. And the thing that I want to know is, Pickens County promised us before that they would watch for best practice, best management practices. If they don't, then what, what, where are we headed? And then the second thing is, my mom's driveway is washing away. So, when is it going to be appropriate for the county to do an estimate as to replacing her driveway and an estimate for replacing the culvert on Cove Road? And both of you have been out to our property, and also, I probably have spent $5,000 to replace the bridges and probably close to $5,000 on rocks and physical labor to reinforce the creek. So, is the county going to be willing to reimburse us for that? I mean, if this is a foregone conclusion, this is going to happen. Who do I submit the invoice to? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. All right. Dana, oh, not Dana, I'm sorry. Dana, you raised good questions. We don't have any answers to those questions today, but the staff has heard you.
Yes. My rationale is, the county is the one that made my parents surrender the land. The county is the one that maintains Cove Road. Our driveway is within the right-of-way. So, inevitably, it might not be this year, but the county, believe you me, you're going to pay for it. So, we might as well go ahead. And the other point of reference is Hobson Creek Road. I think it was $750,000 to replace the three bridges there. You might as well go ahead and figure out what it's going to take to make my parents' home, as well as 280 Harbin Creek Road, which is also a county-maintained road. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Further questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
I will have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation of the staff with the agreement of measures that to be taken for erosion control. Is there a second?
Before we get to the second, can I have clarification? One was approval with the staff's condition? And did you want to add conditions related to the document that was submitted to compliance with that document?
Yes. And trees.
Other trees, I understand trees to be reflected in this document?
Is this a phrase in the document?
Okay. So, just, yeah, staff condition and this compliance with that document.
Thank you. So, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we will close that hearing on RZ 190685. And we now move on to new business. RZ 190686 will open that hearing. Jasper Property Ventures.
RZ 190686 is Jasper Property Ventures LLC. This is located on Mockingbird Lane in Jasper. They are requesting to take a combined 100 acres from Ag to Rural Residential. It's parcel number 0410, sorry, 041143. I butchered those parcel numbers. 041143001. The intent of the zoning request is to develop a subdivision. You can see on the map behind you where the two parcels are located off of Mockingbird, and there's two that are adjoining side by side. And then I've also included the street view from Highway 53 of where you turn on to Mockingbird, as well as that corner elbow of Mockingbird down at the bottom. And then you can see that the surrounding property zoning is Ag and Rural Residential. This is the proposed survey that was submitted that shows the lot layout and the proposed This is the proposed access that is also includes a signed letter from the BDs saying that they are willing to sell the outlined area in red to the applicant. The character area for this one is suburban residential, and you can see on the map where that's located, right inside of the suburban residential area. And then, after reviewing the applicant's request to rezon the 100 acres from agriculture to rural residential, staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Access is provided to and from a public road regarding ingress and egress to and from the development with adequate width and right-of-way to satisfy utility and road standards. A letter from GDOT stipulating that the current configuration and all associated safety and traffic standards of the intersection of Mockingbird Lane and Highway 53 and its relevant vicinity are satisfactory to accommodate the proposed development in its entirety. A homeowners' association agreement if roads within development are going to be privately maintained. Written acknowledgment from the, of the applicability of the subdivision standards and subdivision approval process detailed in Chapter 38 of the Pickens County Code of Ordinance to the subdivision and the development of the parcels. And written acknowledgment of the intent to adhere to and comply with said standards and processes if applicable. That's it.
All right, very good. Thank you. Who's going to speak on behalf?
My name is Peter Vasmus. Address is 219 Edwards Brook Court, Canton. I met with your board, I believe it was February 12th, and many of you board members gave some wonderful recommendations. I want you to know that we took every single one of those recommendations, and we contacted the appropriate people. Mr. Hensley had made a recommendation, we contact the GDOT. We did so. We have been working with Mr. Donovan Tucker with the GDOT. He has engaged an engineer to go check out the intersection. He has engaged an engineer to go check out the intersection of Route 53 and Mockingbird Lane. We provided to the GDOT a list of recommendations to make that a safer intersection. Mr. Donovan Tucker with the GDOT said he thought our recommendations are fine, and he didn't see any issues whatsoever in implementing some of those recommendations. They included several signage, reduced speed ahead time, and signs that flashing yellows, that kind of thing. I spoke with Mr. Tucker, in fact, this afternoon. He said they are putting together their recommendation of which signage and where to put it exactly on Route 53 coming from the west to the east. We also had recommendations regarding dealing with amicable power. We met with amicable power. They gave us their outline. They said absolutely no issues whatsoever. Power's already run all the way to our property, so it's just a matter of getting a per, put cost which they're putting together for us. But that's basically amicable power. Has approved that they will be able to supply power without problems whatsoever. And we basically then, the main concern and the whole conjecture at the February 12th meeting from the county was that our project by definition needed to have access from a state-county road. So we solved that issue by a family that owns the home at the end of Mockingbird Lane. They also, by total coincidence, own a piece of property that runs alongside the entire Mockingbird Lane. It's property that's basically useless to anyone at this time. It's just a strip of land that goes all the way up. However, when it gets to near the end of Mockingbird Lane, it widens quite substantially. And as such, we offered to purchase, they offered to sell us the property. We had come to an agreement, the letter is on the board behind you. And we now said, okay, that will give us that access that's required to have an access from a state-county road. We also have the Fire Marshal Department, which gave us their recommendations and their requirements and their restrictions as to what is required to meet this for a 29-acre subdivision. We met those requirements. We have letters back and forth with the Fire Marshal. And he has basically approved our ideas with reference to that based on the requirements that he gave to us. So we now have two entrances to the property. The main entrance will be off of a state-county road. The second entrance will be from the rear, which is coming from an easement road, which is there now. And our goal, of course, is to make sure that that road is also paved at the same time that we do get other work. With the GDOT, we also spoke with them. Since we are buying this strip of land and that piece of land goes all the way out to Route 53, we asked the GDOT, would we be able to expand that and widen it to make it equally, it almost equal to Philadelphia Heights, which is a subdivision just down the block from there? They said absolutely. If you own that piece of land, you will have the right to extend the, expand, I'm sorry, widen the exit of Mockingbird Lane. We took the measurements, regaining another 150 feet placed plus what we already had on Mockingbird Lane. It'll actually be equal to, if not greater than, what Philadelphia Heights currently has. So we met all the requirements. We had taken as many of the suggestions that we could take from this board at our February 12th meeting. We've implemented those. We've contacted the local officials. Then done with every one of the departments you folks made recommendations of. And we hope that we provided the necessary documentation for you to see this through. We've met with the county. They are recommending approval of the project.
So you're, you're purchasing land?
Yes, sir.
And is it your intent to deed that land to the county?
I don't believe that land would be deeded to the county unless we're talking about just that section where it meets Route 53. I believe that may be correct. Yes, sir.
Well, then who would be responsible for the road? Is, is it a county road now?
It is. It's a state-county road.
So we've got half a county road and another half that's not a county road, and who's?
So Mockingbird, sorry, I'm trying to get used to this. Through the conversations that we've had, because we've met with Mr. Vazquez as well as the road department, we've had several meetings to look at things like this. And to, and to my understanding, Mockingbird Lane would be brought up to full county standard, which is a 60-foot right-of-way with adequate access. So it would be county-maintained on anything that is brought up to county standard. And then the actual, as soon as it breaks away from Mockingbird to go into the development, that part will be privately maintained.
But the land would still belong to?
Anything that's brought up to county standard would, in essence, be given for county maintenance, which would mean that the county would own that, that area. You know, if it's a currently, and I, I can't remember exactly what the right-of-way is, but if it's a 30-foot right-of-way and it's extended to a 60-foot right-of-way and there's an extra 10-foot of pavement added, then Mr. Vazquez would have to give that portion of the road to the county. It would have to be needed over for the county maintenance to begin on that portion.
So, so back to the original question. You're, you're prepared to give that portion of Mockingbird Road that you're gonna acquire to allow it to be a 60-foot right-of-way to the county?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. Didn't want to be half in and half out. Done work well, for the long run, we want to make sure it's done right now.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Other questions of the board?
Okay, so you're gonna widen to county standards. When will that be done? My concern is, you can't pass a car on that road. I drove through there last week. And when you start developing in there and you're having dump trucks and all this stuff going down through there, when will the county road be cleared? What timeframe are you looking at?
We asked about timeframes at the last meeting I had with the representatives, with Ashley, some other representatives. The timeframe, as far as the timeframe for us getting all the approvals, permits in line, I think we said is six months? Approximately six months, give or take. And then whatever time they finally give us the okay, that would have to be one of the initial things that would be done. As you mentioned, exactly right. You need that widening just, for no other reason, just to be able to get two cars or a truck to go through there. So, yes.
So they wouldn't be developing until the roads were in place?
That's correct. Because you actually have to have, as you said, you have to have that, yes.
How many houses are you planning on putting in here?
29, sir.
So that's three acre lots, roughly?
The smallest is 1.9, the largest is five, I believe. And the average is probably 2.5 to 3, give or take.
Now you're looking at a subdivision as opposed to, before you were going to have all kind of activities in there other than a subdivision?
It's, no, we just meant be able to have activities within the 100-acre parcels. In other words, things for the kids, hiking trails, that type of thing.
So you're still looking at four-wheelers and all that kind of stuff?
No, no, not four-wheelers, like hiking trails.
Okay, so you have gotten rid of?
Yes, this is strictly nature-type walks, hiking trails along the areas of the nature.
And last time you were saying you were gonna have like Airbnbs in there. Is that also canceled?
That was, no, that was never part of our project, so I'm sorry.
Something I'll write in the slide, okay?
Okay, thank you. We've got several folks that want to speak. And I'd like to consolidate them to the best of our ability within 10 minutes total. So, let's see. Andrew, I'm gonna save you for the last one. Ricky Ray. Come on up here, Ricky. We want to be able to see you and hear you. There are four.
My name's Ricky Ray. I'm at 2753, Highway 53 West to Jasper. So I'm pretty much adjacent to this property we're talking about. I've got a couple of questions about, let's say, that second easement. I'm not really understanding where it's supposed to be. In other words, the second road, do we all have an in and out? I know with Mockingbird Lane, you're turning into a fair, but where is the, where does the other one tie in?
So, it would be, I gotta get used to this. So the first one would come down off of Mockingbird and then enter over here. And then the emergency exit, I believe, and that's something that Mr. Vazquez has discussed, but I believe it would come in off of the easement down here. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the primary entrance, though, would come off of this corner down here, Mockingbird, and then enter the subdivision over here. And then, again, the emergency exit would come off of this easement back here. Because we don't have a requirement for, we have a requirement for the primary access, but it's a Fire Marshal standard to have that secondary access, so we don't have anything that says it can't be off of an easement.
So could I ask you?
Sir, you address the questions to us.
Okay. I just wanted if you could tell me exactly where that is still. I don't understand. It's the top of the hill where Mockingbird Lane goes to the top of the hill. And then it goes right down in there to, to your property. Where would that extra one be?
You're talking about the extra exit?
Yeah, yeah.
Ashley?
I believe, and I'm not 100% certain, but I believe, is there a house down at the end?
There is.
Of Mockingbird? Okay. I have no relation to like physically driving on the road, I'm not.
I spoke with a gentleman who lives at the end of Mockingbird Lane the other day when I drove down there to see how the roads look like. And he's the one that said that he was going to sell in the property, his property. The property that they have adjoins his property all the way around. And so they're gonna buy the easement around his property that will come out right there where his house is at the end of that Mockingbird Lane.
Okay, so that's the same person that's?
I don't know. They, they, they will, later, but anyway, that was where the second one is coming out, just on the other side of that road where the gravel road goes out. It'll be that little intersection down there, so then you'll have two exits coming out of that big area into Mockingbird. Is the way I've understood it last week.
It would be like an emergency. One other thing about the, up there at 53. The DOT, you know, they, is, is making it wider, will make it any safer to pull in and out? I mean, it, I lived there all my life, and I know what it's like.
Well, that's, the DOT's purview is to determine what needs to be done there. It's within their purview to determine what the requirement should be and how it should be done. So we've got to rely on them to ensure that it's done the way they want it done.
Chairman, and I, again, and it's if you guys accept the staff recommendation, but that's one of the conditions in the staff recommendation was we, if it is accepted as the way the recommendation and the conditions are written, we will not approve the subdivision until we have something in writing from GDOT that says that it is safe to configure whatever the configuration ends up being. So that would be a requirement prior to any development or approvals at all given to those two tracts of land.
So we have to weigh on that and see if they approve.
Yeah, yeah. So the property, again, if it, if it goes through with the conditions that we proposed, the property will not even be rezoned until those conditions are met.
Thank you. Robbie, Robbie Ray? Robbie, good to see you again.
Good to see you again. It's Robbie Ray.
Address?
Talking about the easement.
Tell us your address there.
520 Mockingbird Lane. The only access right now they got is through that road. It's an easement. And the way I'm understanding what y'all are saying is, that easement will be donated? Is that right? Well, I was still not understanding where the other easement is. So that easement, the easement that you got now going into the road, is it gonna be a maintenance entrance?
Ashley, could you?
Yeah. So the, what they've got proposed is, it will be, the primary entrance can't be an easement. It has to be true access to a county or a state-maintained road. So they would be purchasing, and my hand is not super steady, they would be purchasing this entire tract of land right here that runs parallel. So their primary entrance would come in, they would upgrade Mockingbird down to the elbow. They would, that would be upgraded to the 60-foot, and then they would come off the corner down there of Mockingbird on the other side of the BD house. And then their backup, like emergency exit as required by the Fire Marshal, would come off of, again, that easement down there. But I can't speak much to those standards again because that's the Fire Marshal's, and I can definitely give you his contact information. But that is gonna remain on that easement that they have from the very end of the unmaintained portion of, of Mockingbird.
Okay, so the maintenance of that road, somebody left up to the bedroom, it is?
It, it, the way that I have, it, it's still a county-maintained road all the way, all the way through. I know county maintenance technically ends, but it is county right-of-way. So that would be a question for the road department. I'm not sure how that would work.
For my house is?
Right.
That's a county access road?
From what we looked at last time, it is a county road all the way to the corner, but the county maintenance, to my understanding, ends at that corner. The, the elbow that's right here.
So the easement now, the 1500-foot easement?
The easement that he has is only for this little teeny county strip from the edge of Mockingbird down to his property.
Yes, that's, that's what he has.
Correct.
1500-foot easement.
Okay.
And, and the road is just like 15-foot wide.
Right, right. And that's, again, I, I can't speak to those road standards because those are gonna be set forth by the Fire Marshal.
You know, Tim, Tim gave him the easement.
Right.
So he gave it to an individual, and then sold it to another individual. So that, can that easement be used for?
The easements to the property, and I, that kind of gets into legal territory, so I can't really speak much to that. But if there is an easement to the property for the purpose of ingress egress, they can use it to access the property, whatever, through whatever avenue that may be.
So there's no site so we can?
I can't speak to it. That would be something that we look at and we would have to approve during the subdivision approval process. And that's something, too, that you would have to double-check with the road department on.
So we got a couple of steps, we got a couple of steps coming. One, the DOT's gotta, gotta come forward. Their plan has gotta be approved. The land's gotta be acquired. It's gonna have to be brought up to county standards all the way up to their property line. And then the subdivision itself is gonna have to be approved. The plan for the subdivision will have to be approved as well.
Okay, once that, if that gets approved, then the road at the high mountain, can anybody use for a maintenance entrance?
I don't know enough about it to speak on it at this point. Right. Right. I, I would have to look at, at the way everything's plotted out to be able to speak on that again. We, as a requirement from the planning and development side, we only have the requirement for the primary entrance. The secondary entrance comes from the Fire Marshal's side, so I don't know enough about it to even speak on anything that has to do with that secondary entrance. So.
You've got time to work on that.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna get, play on my.
Delma's got enough challenges, right? She doesn't need yours. Thank you, Robbie. Toby Jones?
Actually, I've carried up a microchip on my shoulder. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Andrew Kinney?
Nope, nope, yep, sorry.
What?
I was sidetracked.
Hey, everybody. I live at 265 Mockingbird Lane, right there at the end. Andrew's case for parcel. I spoke to Mrs. Holmes there. I really didn't write my name down to say much. I didn't know if anyone had questions for me, or if any of the Rays or anyone else would have questions for me. But just to clear things up a little bit, I mean, you know, if the county, if the road is brought up to county standards and the primary entrance will be all on private land at that point, the road will dive off and go back into his neighborhood. I don't know what to say about the, about the easement. I can understand everyone's concerns. But the, the house is owned by my wife and I, and then the 33 and a half acres around it is owned by my parents and I. It's in my parents' name. We haven't parceled it because we just didn't want to deal with it. So, you know, I like the project. I think it has potential. But I understand everyone's concerns, and I just wanted to put my name down in case anyone had a question for me for our property. So if not, then I'll sit my butt back down.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you can respond if you will.
So I just want to make it clear. And Ms. Holmes, I believe you drove the road, so you know the actual road there. So the main road is Mockingbird Lane. The easement that we're all discussing right now is easement where Mockingbird, the paved section finishes, terminates, and you make a car 90-degree turn to the right and it becomes a gravel easement road. That easement is to supply the home for, driveway for Mr. Robbie Ray's family, and then our 250 acre parcels as well. Right now, when we first bought the property, we probably spent 15,000, $20,000 in dump trucks to try to improve that road. Mr. Ray clearly said to me that after the first big rains, it's going to start washing out, and he was absolutely correct. So it did start washing out after that. We also put in a new culvert there at the corner of Mockingbird.
That's all you did was culvert.
And they're on the road. And so I think what they're missing is that we're wanting to pave that road. We wanted to widen the road, not the county standards there because we're not allowed to. We're only allowed to widen it to whatever we're allowed to widen it there. But it'll be then paved, widened to whatever we're allowed to widen it to, so that two cars can pass. And to get back to what Ashley said, it's an emergency exit. The main exit is off of Mockingbird.
Thank you. Further questions from the board on anything?
Have you got an approval from the state yet? I know you said it's in the process, but have you got an approval from the state?
You mean like the GDOT?
An approval for the coming off of 53 on the Mockingbird Lane?
So the GDOT, the man named after Tucker, he's the one, and he assigned an engineer to it. He took the recommendations that we had given him regarding the signage. He said we have absolutely no problems with doing additional signage. He agreed that it would make it a safer environment with the additional signage. And they were basically putting a plan together of where to put those additional signs, what kind of additional signs they would be, whether it was hidden drive, reduce speed. We all agreed on reduce speed, it had to be a good one, and reduce the speed from the 55 down to like 45. And then we talked about the yellow flashing sign, and we talked about the hidden drive sign, and the reduced speed head sign. He's putting together the plan with his engineer where to put signage on that road. He has no issues whatsoever with that, making it a safer environment.
But has he signed all of them?
They're still...the engineers are still working on it. In other words, where they're going to put the signs. I have texts from them, and I have emails from them stating that they don't have any issues with the signage. They think the signage is a good idea, and they will implement it once their engineer comes up with exactly where he thinks they should be put on Route 53. How far out it should be put in versus the ones that are currently there.
So there is going to be a condition, an additional lane there as a turn-in and a turnout?
We asked him about a decell lane. He agreed that that would be a great thing. Philadelphia Heights has it, and he said no problem with the decell lane. He said we'd have to file for, I believe it's called, Ashley might go, I think it's called an encroachment permit. I believe that's correct. So Mr. Tucker said we would file for an encroachment permit to also be able to do a decell lane just like Philadelphia Heights has.
That is dangerous. There's a car coming over the hill, just thought it was about to roll out.
Absolutely, 100% agree. Yeah, that's a decell lane is a great idea, absolutely.
All right. 30 seconds.
Okay. I'm just going by what he just said about the decell lane.
Point up to the microphone, please, sir.
I was just listening to about the decell line. Would that be coming from the west or from the east?
From the west.
From the west. Now, if a decell lane is put there, it would have to take part of my daughter's yard because you can't make room without taking room. And you're talking about cutting the distance between the highway and her house by about 50%. Her house is pretty close to the road anyway. And it's about 200-foot wide there that would take us to, it would take it all to make a decell line.
Wouldn't that be, is that part of the encroachment agreement that you spoke to, Ashley?
It would be decided upon, you know, of course, DOT is not going to approve that they add that decell lane on property that Mr. Vasquez doesn't own. So that would not be something, that's of course something that the engineer would have to determine when they, when they go through their findings. And that would be a part of, again, if that condition is added, the GDOT would have to be completely satisfied with whatever that access looks like at the end of the day prior to us approving the subdivision. But I understand where you're coming from. GDOT's not going to approve the decell lane if Mr. Vasquez doesn't own that property. So that's just something that would be taken into account when they're doing their engineer report.
Right. In other words, if he were to be able to get that done and get a decell line, if he doesn't buy that property from my daughter before.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Any further...
30 seconds?
This is not anything I've already heard.
Probably. But he don't have the approval on the easement now before y'all take him. So it might seem like he's got the approval from Tim and me, but he don't have the approval on that. And when he said he spent 15, $20,000 on the road, all he's done was put one dump load of gravel on it. The rest of that was from the end of that road all up in his property. That's where he spent the money. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Peter, respond.
I would be more than happy to supply the board here a receipt from the company with directions for them to put in their invoice of where they dumped some of the ground.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions? Do I have a motion? We have a motion to approve the recommendation of the staff. Now let's talk about what that includes. Ashley?
Do you want me to go all the way back through?
Yes.
Yep. So five conditions. The first one is that access is provided to and from the public road regarding ingress and egress to and from the development with adequate width and right-of-way to satisfy utility and road standards. Second is a letter from Georgia Department of Transportation stipulating that the current configuration and all associated safety and traffic standards of the intersection of Mockingbird Lane and Highway 53 and its relevant vicinity are satisfactory to accommodate the proposed development in its entirety. Number three is a homeowners association agreement will be required if roads within the development are to be privately maintained. Number four is a written agreement of the applicability of the subdivision standards and subdivision approval process detailed in Chapter 38 of the Pickens County Code of Ordinances to subdivision and the development of the parcels. And the final one is a written acknowledgment of the intent to adhere to and comply with said standards and processes if applicable.
So we have that as part of your motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll sit it.
A motion and a second. Is there further discussion from the board? All in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. All opposed? To oppose, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll close that hearing, and we'll move on to RZ 190706, Albert Mill Road. Ashley?
RZ 190706, Mr. Al Sayidi is located on All Red Mill Road in Jasper. And I will add right here, too, I think our agenda says RR, but it is ER. It is going from agriculture to estate residential. 19.84 acres, and it's parcel number 053006. The intent of the zoning request is to develop a four-lot subdivision. You can see on the location map behind you where that parcel is. It's located and indicated with a star. And then I've also included the road view of what that parcel looks like. This is the proposed survey for the four-lot development. And then the character area for this, and I will add a note that it is on the cusp of being rural residential, but it is, I find, in the suburban residential character area. And our recommendation, after reviewing the applicant's request to rezone the 19.84 acres from agriculture to estate residential, staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you. Ashley, who's going to speak?
My name's Jim Harden. I'm the president of Walden Ashworth and Associates Consulting Engineers.
My name is Abbas Al Sayidi. I own the property.
Thank you. So what would you add to what you just heard from Ashley? You've got some nice drawings there.
Well, I first got involved with this project when Abbas cut down some trees on his property. And I met with Bethany Brown, and logging is not a violation of erosion control ordinance. So that's when I got involved, and I helped develop this plan as a low-impact development. So rather than do masquerade, we're trying to work with the topography of the land there. And so we met with her again, and we agreed that estate residential development was the best option for that process.
Okay. When was it you, I mean, essentially the land was clear-cut?
Well, no, the logs were cut down and laid down, the stumps were not removed, which is not a violation of the ordinance. So I sent her a letter basically detailing that.
Aren't you splitting hairs?
Well, I mean, he was cutting those trees to see if that was a proper place to build a house. He was going to build a house there, but...
All of them? I mean, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not trying to be funny here, but I mean, I've driven down that road and I've seen the land, and I mean, it's clear. My definition of clear-cut...
Yeah, it was clear.
Is what it was. I mean, what year was that?
Last year. Two years ago.
Two years. So you didn't have a land disturbance permit because...
It's not required. It's not required to get a land disturbance permit to do timbering.
You say?
I would have to look at what the state requires and consult with the state on that. I have heard from people at the GSWCC state that if the stump's not removed, it's not considered clearing. So there's like gray areas in clearing when the stump is not removed.
So is there, is there a creek associated with this property?
Yes.
There's two creeks that cover the property, going south.
On, you can see on those two.
So there was no measures taken because you didn't have a land disturbance permit? You didn't take any measures to control erosion?
No, we just cut the trees down.
A lot of?
Not, no, I mean, there's almost 20 acres of trees on the property. We didn't cut all the trees down.
Right from here this way, we didn't touch it. We only cleared like right here and then along this side.
I've seen it. And by there. Are the lots going to be individually sold, or are you going to build the houses?
We're going to build one at a time.
So you would build and develop?
Yeah.
Sell those lots to a developer, if he's asking?
No, I'm going to build one house, sell it, and then build another one and sell it.
And what size houses will it be?
About 3,000 square foot to 4,000 square foot, I believe, we have, something like that.
And what do you think the market value will be?
About 650 to 600 a house.
Pretty low, it would seem to me, based on that size of house. So what about, I guess you did several driveways off of Albert Mill. Is it three driveways or four driveways?
And we looked at doing a road, but the topography is too severe for a county-maintained road. We just couldn't get that to work unless we masqueraded. So that's why we fell back to the individual driveways. Now, the driveways are 16 feet wide, which allows two cars to pass each other. A lot of the county roads are not that wide, so we're trying to make those driveways where emergency vehicles can get to the house if they need to.
Other questions from the board at this point?
Also, I mean, when we met with Bethany, she asked us to go ahead and purvey our subdivision plan, so we've done that. I've done a stormwater management report, and it identifies that we're not increasing the peak runoff rate on any of the streams that they, as they pass the southern property on, that we're not affecting the stormwater for the people south of the property. And also, the people north of the property, the headwater doesn't impact them. So everything is, like I said, has been designed as a low-impact development. We even have a huge conservation easement in the back. This area back here is a conservation easement that'll preserve it from being developed.
It's hard to, for me to imagine that there hasn't been a runoff issue relative to the slope of that land and how it, I mean, it is what it is.
Well, there's a, there's a big drainage basin upstream. It's 20 acres on the stream that's closest to All Red Road, and it's, I think it's 75 acres for the stream further to the east. So there's a, there's a lot of runoff that comes down through there. But the impact of this development on that is, it's not going to, it's not going to be an impact.
You use the term masquerade a couple of times. How do you...
Masquerade?
Isn't that what you said?
Yes, sir.
And how did, how did you mean that when you used that term in your discussion?
Basically, take the hilltop down and flatten the side so you can build more houses. We originally discussed doing rural residential, which I think is, correct me if I'm wrong, two-acre lots. So we've come back from that, and we're just doing four lots on just under 20 acres.
All right, thank you. We've got some other folks that are going to want to speak, so... Let's see, I've, GNC, I've got you, and I've also got Riker, and I've got Don. I'm going to let Riker go first because I knew you've got a comprehensive report. Mr. Low, good to see you.
Hi, please. Thank you for having me. Riker Low, I live at 1063 Mineral Springs Road South. I've been in my home for 23 years with my family. We've had the farm for 41 years where we live. Our family's been here for 174 years in this county. We try to be good neighbors. We try to leave it a little better than we found it. I don't know this gentleman from Adams House Gap. I don't wish him any ill will. But to say you didn't clear-cut the land is hogwash. It's stripped down to the ground. And to say another extra drop didn't run off from that water is also hogwash. We've done plenty of projects, and we can rest assured it's safe for the tornado. We planted way more trees than we've ever cut down. We've rearranged entire buildings based on where the trees were. I have been over All Red Mill since 1987, and I can rest assured that more traffic goes through there in one day than used to in one week. I was over there before the roads was paved. I was over there before the concrete was red. And having more homes back there is not going to help it look any better. And the flat top of the hill doesn't sound very appealing anyway. All of my good neighbors over there on All Red Mill, Chalton Mine, Mineral Springs, Happy Talk, and Holly Heights moved over there for a reason. It's pretty over there. It's nice over there. It's pretty over there. It's nice over there. And it's woodsy over there. And we try to leave it a little better than we found it. When I moved into my house, you could see it. I planted so many trees, now you can't see it. There's a reason for it. We try to mind our own business and keep things looking very nice. And to strip, cut a hill down there and plant some houses up there, be fine if they were hidden up there. But the traffic's not going to help its signal, the single-phase power that runs out through there anyway. Power goes out on a regular basis, I can assure you. So at the end of the day, I can't see the benefit of having four extra houses and graded off the hill, flat over there. I can't see one reason for it. I don't know if anybody in particular is saying for this fine gentleman, I'm sure he's a fine fellow. I can't see anything that's going to be a benefit to all the people who have been out there, dressed up their yard, taken pride in the yard, moved out there, planted trees. And now this is all stripped down there, so we're happy. With all due respect, an eyesore in the middle of an otherwise idyllic portion of the county. That's about it.
Thank you, Riker. Good to see you. All right. Ms. Maddox, come forward.
Thank you, sir.
Don, we'll hold you. You decide if you want to speak, Captain.
You've got eight minutes to... Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I was retained by some residents, the Crows, that live just north of the property that's at issue here. I provided packets to everyone and also have a PowerPoint presentation. Of course, we have at issue parcel number 053006. And this is a request to change zoning from agriculture to estate residential. And this is a 19.85 acre, 895 acre parcel. It's approximately a mile from the four lane. Surrounding zoning is north agriculture, 15 acre tract. West agriculture, 308.12 acre tract, and some. To the south is rural residential, but they're large lots, 11 to 17 to 35 acres down on the south side. The proposed use is a four-lot subdivision, three lots with under four acres each, one lot with 8.365 acres, including 5.13 acres that are supposed to be in conservation easement. The first thing that I noted reviewing the application, there are some deficiencies. The document provided in the zoning application is not an approved survey of the subject property. Also, there was no tax, paid tax bill provided, which is required. In the letter of intent, that was authored by the applicant, Jim Harden. It asks for ag to ER. There's no information in regard to what the claimed impact on the community would be. And that's specifically required to be provided to the planning commission. There's no mention of impact on the following areas: roads, traffic on the curvy road leading to the property, public safety, schools are not addressed, impact on surrounding properties is not addressed, impact on water and water quality is not addressed, at least not adequately. There's no mention of plans to mitigate these issues. Utility infrastructure, again, traffic, public safety, and schools. There's no special consideration given or addressed for the impact on the surrounding properties and how the applicant plans to lessen those impacts. There's no construction schedule indicated, as required. There's no indication of stages or phases in the project. And to the contrary of what Mr. Harden and Mr. Saidi indicated, in a plan deep buried within their stormwater management report, it admits that these are going to be lots for sale. And that would thwart the plan to build individual homes individually over time so as to skirt the requirement for buffer variances on the stream. And I think we can see, as we'll see in the PowerPoint later on, skirting, masquerade, whatever you want to call it, is sort of a theme here. This use request is not compatible with the Pickens County Comprehensive Plan that's in place and the future development of this area. Here's an amorphous map in this plan that has sort of a blob going up Highway 515 that is indicated as suburban infill. And a good bit of this piece of property is in that part of the amorphous blob. You'll see it on page five of the packet that I gave you. Page six sort of drills down on a little bit more. And shows that in fact, the area of the lot that is proposed to be developed is actually within the rural development area, which has some specific guidelines. According to the Comprehensive Plan, while the rest of Pickens County is growing rapidly, this area represents traditional rural Pickens County that should retain its less developed rural open space characteristics and maintain them for future generations. So future generations. Riker alluded to this. His family's been here 174 years. They have hundreds of acres right across the street and farms. You'll see on page seven that most of the neighborhood is rural, is not rural residential, but is agriculture. Each one of those squares is a landlot on the map on page seven. That's 160 acres of agriculture. The lots to the south of this piece of property, again, are larger lots, not three acre lots, not three houses bunched up in a row along the road. These lots are 15, 20, 35 acres each. Page eight, you'll see land use. Again, all the white areas in this map are properties that have not changed hands at least since 2018. You'll also see purchase dates and COVA designations, conservation use valuation assessments. These are folks that have signed up for 10-year covenants so that their land is not going to be developed. All the properties around there that are qualified basically are in COVA and intend to stay there. Changing the use to estate residential will negatively affect the property values of adjacent properties while not increasing the value of the property to be rezoned. Interestingly enough, 3 and 4,000 square feet homes on three some odd acre lots for $650,000. He's not going to make any money at that. Homes now 250 a square foot, he's not going to make any money at that. However, there are ways that he could make money there. He could make money there seeding, have a farm, have bees, have goats, have horses, have agrarian things. You'll see on page nine, there's some photos. It's really hard to capture topography in photography. At least I'm not great at it. But this is a very, very steep roadway. Page 10, you'll see. Thank you. You'll see again, the very steep banks and having driveways, three, within a 200-foot span or 200 feet between them along this very steep portion of the road is just not going to be safe. Page 11, you'll see what the property looks like in 2018 or 2022. And then you'll see what it looks like in 2023 on the next page. Page 12, you're going to see the stop work order and citation because there was no land disturbing permit. And you can split hairs all you want to, but if land was not disturbed on this property, I don't know what land disturbance looks like. Page 14, you're going to see no silt fencing or very little silt fencing along the creek that's supposed to have a 25-foot buffer. And then you're going to see the runoff that actually was left.
We need to wrap.
Okay. So in short, the 50-plus people that have signed a petition, that's also been presented to you, are asking this board, along with my clients, the Crows, that this rezoning request be denied.
Thank you. Don, do you have anything to add?
I do. I'll be quick. Just to hurry things along, this is my panel life. I normally start with WWJD, that is, what would Jim do? But since I'm limited on time, we don't have that much time. And I'd get in real trouble if I started telling Jim stories, so. But I do realize after sitting here in my first zoning planning, why y'all get paid the big dollars. So I take my hat off to you guys, but...
It could be called crueler than you call it.
It really is. It really is. But yeah, I don't know why y'all do this. But first of all, just wanted to say that Riker's dad and my dad bought the Guard Trail property in the mid-'80s. And this tract was part of that. It was 600-plus acres. And so this is where this property originally came from and got sold and passed down a couple of times. The loads kept, or ended up with about 400 acres. The Boguses now live on a little over 100 acres of that. I'd say I was the smartest of my siblings, even though I'm the youngest, in that I came back to Jasper first in '89. But now there's four of us, four of my siblings, three of my nieces and seven great nephews and nieces that we're all raising on that 100 acres out there. So it is family property. I don't know that Nancy mentioned the 300 acres that's behind this property. That was the Pickett property that's now the Langsford Trust that is zoned ag too. So there are big tracts, but there's lots of these 19, 20 acre tracts that came from that Pickett, or came from the Guard Trail property that Daddy and I divided up. And there were a lot of covenants they put in place to make sure that it stayed this type of rural property. But here was the one point I wanted to make sure that y'all understood. Because these houses are being pushed towards the front of this property, the three being right up front and the one house right behind those three. Nancy provided that one shot that's paved one of what I gave you. Yes, I did it from the road this afternoon. It's not a very good shot to show you how steep it is. Clayton, I know you went out there and saw it, so you understand how steep it is right off the road. I don't know how they're going to get driveways up the front of that property. They're going to have to move a whole lot of dirt. And you saw what the runoff already is. And there's the creek right at the very bottom of that hill. So I don't know how they hit the dirt, where they get an angle enough that they can get driveways up that hill. But regardless, that's what they say they're going to do. But here's what they're not telling you is these three houses and the one house right behind it, that the two southern angle to angle, corner to corner, are probably somewhere in the 100 feet corner to corner apart from each other. The house next to Kevin and Nicole, property line is probably only about 25 feet from their property line. It looks like an Arbor Hill neighborhood from the road, that they're so close together. Because yes, it's 19 acres, but it's all pushed right together. So from the road, it looks like a third acre lot of the neighborhood. So I don't care that it is 19 acres and it's called a state lots. From appearance, it looks like a third acre lots. And we're out here, and we're, for 40 years, we've created a neighborhood that looks like what our fathers tried to create for. And that is space and trees and an environment where we've enjoyed the quietness. And now they're coming in and pushing this environment where it's going to look like a third of an acre subdivision. That's what it's going to appear from the road. So that was just a point I wanted to make out.
So you're opposed?
Very much opposed to it. And the second sheet I just showed you again, just trying to show that, and again, just, the points already been made. He didn't do things right from the beginning. The pile of gravel is coming from Happy Top Trail from where we live, our whole family. It's been sitting there two years, right the right of way of Happy Top Trail. It's not even on his property, but it's set there, we can't even see pulling out onto All Red Mill Road every time we pull out onto the county road. Just because he decided to pile two piles of gravel, not on his property, but on somebody else's property. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Don. Good to see you. All right, Saidi and Jim, give your response to what you heard. Any concerns that you've heard?
Well, I mean, I've done a lot of projects over the years and one of them being River Green in Canton. And I know what a third acre lot, quarter acre lot, the 10th acre lot looks like. And this is certainly not that situation. This is a low-impact development. And took in consideration the trees that were timbered and the homes and the septic systems for those homes are in those areas. You know, any area that's in the stream buffer that doesn't meet the buffer requirement will be replanted. In the erosion control plan we submitted, we stipulated that no more than two homes would be built at a time. But I talked to Abbas and he said he would be willing to stipulate only one house be built at a time. So I don't know how we can make it any more low-impact than that. You know, the houses are way back from the road. You know, when trees grow back in, you're probably not going to see very much of those homes. We've tried to make them safe. We've worked with the Jasper Water Department. So this is a safe estate residential design.
So Jim, my concern goes back to the, what I call clear cutting.
Yes, sir.
And just to my opinion, hair for a split to determine whether or not permits should be had, erosion control should be addressed, and they weren't.
No, I mean, Mr. Al-Saidi doesn't, you know, didn't understand what the enforcement, what the county was. But again, all they did was cut the trees down and lay the logs down. You didn't put any gravel down for a driveway or anything like that, that driveway exists. I'm just asking that question. So like I said, we've worked with the terrain, which is difficult. And we tried to come up with a design that was as low-impact to the environment and as, you know, as far away from other homes as we could possibly make them.
Can I mention something? Ms. Nancy mentioned that it was a saturation issue. There was no saturation issue. Just a work order, stop work order. And then when we met with everybody, there was, I believe, Linda Casey, I think, used to be the planning something, that lady?
Yeah.
Yes, so we met with her, with the fire marshal and the erosion control lady as well and everything. They said, you know, they said just, you know, submit a plan and then go from there. But they said, whatever I did, it wasn't wrong. And I asked, I came here and asked Linda Casey if I cut the trees and we do more change. It was okay. I don't need a permit. And she said it was fine. And that's why I did it.
Questions for the board for the applicant, while we've got him here?
How much writing are you going to do? How much smoothing out, leveling out?
Uh, let's see here. About five acres. Having put some driveways in the septic system, so you're ready to put the houses. So a fourth of the land. It's a lot less than a normal subdivision. It is impacted by, as we all know. But that would not be, that would be if they were all done at once. Each one is, you know, acre and a half to two acres.
Acre and a half, two acres, meaning being cleared.
Yeah, the most severe one would be closer to two acres.
Would that include the stumps that's going to have to be removed?
But, yes, ma'am. Yeah, we tried to put the development portion of the houses, the septic systems in that area that had already been timbered, so we wanted to make sure we utilize that area for what construction was going to happen.
How many stumps do you think exist today?
I don't know, sir. I would speculate.
I mean, just looking at that area, I would imagine there are hundreds.
I can't refute that because I didn't count the stumps.
Further questions from the board?
Did you see on page 14, the stances?
I did not.
None of that, maybe nothing legally required to see the impact.
I mean, I've lived in the subdivisions, we've developed for 30 years, and the stream that runs through my property looks like that or kind of drains. I understand.
That's because what's going on upstream, which...
Didn't you talk that before?
I mean, I, you know, segmentation is a natural process. I mean, look at Grand Canyon, that's, I mean, that occurs every time we have a rain, with the topsoil we have here in Georgia.
Well, people up here, I've owned property since '97 up here. We don't have rivers, but we have a lot of streams, and everybody takes a lot of pride in those streams.
I mean, I understand, I mean, for the county here, I've done dams and dam assessments, Sharp Mountain Water Shed 22, 2, 14, 13, 12, 27, I mean, 80% of the work that my firm does is for the state, or for the counties, and for the federal government for dam design. So segmentation, I understand this is very important, and we prepared an erosion control plan to address those issues. But we're waiting for the rezoning, you know, before we started implementing those so that we could do all of that together.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley, Ms. Maddox raised a couple of questions regarding the assessment that you did overall and whether or not everything was done in accordance with...
Yes, this again was one of those applications that fell in that gray area of no director in place, and so it was when...
I thought you were acting director.
It was when, it was in that transition period that there wasn't someone to actually take and accept the application, so this is something that I have been working on, that I kind of came into. And so that was the reason that there was a lack of probably multiple documents.
Then the question would be, is this right for decision?
I've been here a few weeks and doing quite a bit of observation. Staff is in talks of providing more of a criteria basis when we're gathering information for reporting. Given that this is four lots, everywhere else I've been, I wouldn't have, just for example, I wouldn't have bothered the school district with four lots, especially estate lots, because where I come from, it was about multifamily, 300 to 1,000 units coming in. That's where you get a methodology in terms of formula that's put in place of how many extra classrooms would be involved. Given that this is an estate development, I can kind of argue against the school district being involved at this time. However, as we move forward, there's going to be more staff involvement from rural department, from public works, what have you, that'll have an input with all the findings that the staff comes up with before we present to you all our recommendations and staff report.
Thank you. Further questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
I don't like the three rows coming off that hill into the other road there. I want a motion that we deny this application.
We have a motion to deny the application. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five.
All opposed? Motion carries to deny the request.
Ma'am, if it's just a number of driveways, we have one common driveway, could we make the other one a common driveway and eliminate one of the driveways? Would that, would that be acceptable?
Mr. Chairman, the hearing on that item is closed. There is still an opportunity to address that as it goes to the board commissioners.
Okay.
Or to the commissioner of the district for some...
Okay.
Thank you, counsel. All right, we will close that hearing and open a hearing, the last one. You say the last one? Maybe, maybe it's the best one, I don't know. They are on the front row, so we'll let Ashley introduce you first. Thank you. We'll adjourn on RZ 190707, Matthew Kinzer. Looks like you're safe, there's nobody here to approach you.
Okay, RZ 190707, Matthew Kinzer. This is located at 219 Run Road in Jasper. He is seeking to take a 2.797 acre portion of his 16.52 acre tract from ag to rural residential. The parcel number is 040041. The intent of the request is to sell the existing home with the 2.797 acres. You can see the location map right behind you, Highway 53 is to the north, and then it comes off of Run Road. And Mr. Kinzer also owns the property that is south, I believe, if I'm correct on that. It is surrounded by highway business, rural residential, and agricultural property. I've also included a picture of the home that sits on the tract. This is the proposed survey that shows the exact 2.797 acres that is to be subdivided and rezoned. Character area for this is the suburban residential. And after reviewing the applicant's request to rezone the 2.797 acre portion of 040014 from ag to RR, staff recommends approval of this request.
Okay, Matthew.
All right, Matthew Kinzer, 219 Run Road.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for sticking it out.
I was very entertained.
You have an unusual sense of humor.
Well, it's like...
I did.
We're moving to South Carolina, but we just can't park with all of our land here in Pickens County because we love it so much, and maybe they'll come back, so we're just selling this house.
Going to sell the house and the acres that are on it?
Correct.
Do you find somebody to buy it?
Yes. Matter of fact, we're renting to them until this gets opposed.
Very good. What part of Carolina are you going to?
Westminster, up on Hartwell.
Okay. That's a high cotton area out there.
Oh, it's high. Four dirt farmers on the lake.
Oh, come on now, come on, I've been up there, I knew about that. Do you like the fishing?
Yeah, I don't know if I like this every day, but we're about to find out.
Okay. Any questions?
Matthew.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'm on it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Matthew. Enjoy the fishing.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm teaching up there.
All right.
I'm curious, Matthew, are you still in the plant business or landscape?
Yeah, we can cut that down to over 70.
I'm pretty enough, I'm hoping that we're using your keep in the land to get back to plant business.
Yeah, no, I think I'm done.
Any further comments? There's not much public left. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
And a second. All in favor.